That being said, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone on this foggy morning and I'd like to say that it's it's been not so humid down here today. It's been certainly foggy, but hopefully the weather will clear up and we'll get a little bit of rain around this area and we'll be able to get outside and drop some of the humidity. So anyway, you know, I have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda circulated? Hearing none, a motion to approve the agenda is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by councillor Lauren Cushing, seconded by councillor Paddy Durkey. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda circulated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded? Motion carried. Item number four, is there any declarations of conflict interest? For once, I don't have one. All right, we'll move on to item number five, Nova Scotia Power Smart Meters. We have with us today Mary Block from Nova Scotia Power. She had circulated a presentation that she has. It's going to take approximately 20 minutes and afterwards I'll entertain any questions that any councillors and/or staff may have. Mary, are you joined by anybody else today?
I am, and I'll introduce them if it's time for me to take the floor now with your permission, Deputy Warden.
Yes, you have the floor. You go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm also going to add that I'll be sharing my screen momentarily and it'll show you the same slides as what we have circulated in advance of this meeting. However, there's been a small update on it just in regard to our progress within the project because we want to give you live information. So to answer your question, the people that I've brought with me today, I'm going to make a brief introduction and you'll see them shortly. First of all, the manager of field support, Amy Woodford, and she's going to be speaking to what my team provides, elected officials like yourselves and those across the province. And once she goes through one page in our presentation, I'll then be handing it over to Jamie Chip, who's a project manager with our smart meter project, which is very relevant in your area right now. So again, thank you to you Deputy Warden. And I don't think the Warden is in the room with us, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so thank you Deputy Warden Cunningham. I was going to offer that extension to Warden Anthony, but now that he's not in the room, I've figured that out. It took a little bit of analytics here with all those little pictures. And thank you also to all of the councillors and staff that are sharing their time with us this morning. With that being said, I'm now going to hand it over to Amy Woodford. And Amy, I will share the screen for you as well.
Great, thanks very much, Mary. Wait to see if it pops up on my screen.
And you should be able to see it now.
There you go, great. Good morning, everyone. I echo Mary's comments. Thanks very much for having us. We're excited to to present to you and entertain any questions that you might have. I'm sure that you have lots. Mary, I just want to advance the first slide there. I won't take too long on my part, of course, because Jamie is going to be the the highlight of this presentation, the meat and potatoes, if you will. But just wanted to give a bit of an overview in terms of what our government relations team does. Certainly, one of the key functions that the team, myself and Mary and a couple of others do is coordinate council sessions like this for any relevant topics or information, whether it's projects that we're working on or anything that may pass before the regulator or really any general discussion. So you you likely would have seen in the past emails from our government relations email box. So often we will provide proactive information typically with when we're ramping up for storm season or we're activating our emergency center, we'll give you that information ahead of time to let you know, you know, what plans we're making in terms of what we're seeing for weather and and that might help you as well and some of your departments make plans as well. We'll also give you proactive updates in terms of different projects and initiatives such as the smart meter project that we're going to go through today. So I will say our dedicated government relations email address and our dedicated phone number is 24/7 service and it's dedicated for elected officials. So we do have our 24/7 customer care center that fields questions from customers right across the province. And the reason that we developed the government relations dedicated contact is my team will function in a bit of a coordinator fashion. So you might get inquiries or folks coming into your office and they might have an inquiry about their bill situation, whether it's a high bill or they're struggling to pay their bill. You might get inquiries from from customers looking to get trees trimmed on their property. Sort of you name it. And so those inquiries that come in often touch many different parts of the organization. So we're able to triage those for you and get a bit of an expedited resolution to whatever the scenario might be. So that's a little bit, like I said, a little bit about our government relations team. I will hand things over to Jamie and and like Mary said, we're happy to field questions that you might have at the end.
And Jamie, you should be able to see your beginning slide and I'll let you speak to that.
Excellent, thank you, Mary. Can can everyone hear me?
I can hear you great, Jamie, thank you.
Okay, can all the councillors and staff hear me? Fantastic, okay, let's get started. First of all, I've never been called a highlight before, so thank you for that, Amy, or meat and potatoes. And happy to be with the municipality of the District of Yarmouth here this morning. And Patty, very happy to see that you brought your dog. If you hear my dog barking in the background, I hope it doesn't start your dog barking. We have this chain reaction that it sets off. But as as Mary and Amy said, I am the senior program manager with the smart meter project here at Nova Scotia Power. We're here to share information with with elected officials and staff on any any questions you might have. And hopefully this will give you the information that you need to have informed discussions with your constituents. And and as a consumer of electricity yourself, you'll see some of the clear benefits for the municipality of Yarmouth. Just to rewind a little bit, this project has been ongoing at Nova Scotia Power for just about four years now. So this would have, I would have joined the company and been working exclusively on the smart meter project since about 2016. We would have filed with the UARB in late 2017 and it went through a rigorous regulatory approval process as you may be aware, the UARB does kick the tire on on projects of this size pretty, they kick the tires pretty hard as well as the stakeholders and consumer advocate and industrial group and whatnot. I'll have a say in in the overall approval of the project. The project itself was approved and granted. It was approved in in June of 2018. And so that's when we swung into gear, ramping up both. I kind of I kind of break the project down into two kind of components. There's the information technology and building the systems that that you need in order to manage the information that you're collecting. And then there's the actual deployment of the physical assets themselves, the meters and the network that I'll talk about in in just a few minutes. So that started in, the the project itself started execution in in mid 2018. And the first meters went on customers' homes in October of of 2019. So this is a, this this business case does have a, or this this project does have a positive business case in that the money that Nova Scotia Power is investing on behalf of rate pairs will have a positive payback. So the upfront capital cost will be more than offset by the operational efficiencies and benefits that will accrue to Nova Scotia Power and rate pairs go forward over the life of this project. So good, good business case and it's also good for customers. So I'll talk a little about some of the functional and customer experience enhancements. But essentially it fits with Nova Scotia's power strategy of maintaining rate stability, having a more reliable power grid and of course it sets us up well for initiatives related to clean energy. So if we can just move on to the next slide, Mary? So essentially what is a, what is a smart meter? So if you were to see a smart meter, and this is a, this is a good picture of one, it doesn't look fundamentally different than a digital meter that you'll you'll see on on many customers' homes in in your area today. The one piece, the one big difference is is that it does measure, it does measure more things than kilowatt hours usage, it measures events, alarms, it measures voltage, it measures a whole bunch of other things that are important, not just from a billing perspective for for customers, but also from effectively managing the the grid perspective. It it measures these these components and then it basically communicates. So that's that's the big difference between the the legacy meters that are on customers' homes today and the new smart meters. It's able to communicate that information wirelessly back to to Nova Scotia Power. And I'll talk a little bit in a couple of slides about how exactly it does that. Important thing to note is that these are not new devices. About 70% of Canadians already have smart meters, so they're widely deployed. This is actually the third generation of technology. So it's like any other piece of technology gets better kind of every every year. Nova Scotia Power is in a great position because we've essentially let other utilities kind of work with the growing pains and and now we get basically the most advanced technology at a at a fairly good price. So jurisdictions such as Ontario and Quebec and British Columbia, Alberta, they've already deployed smart meters in their in their geographies. And so we were able to, in some cases, collaborate with some of those utilities and kind of get best 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 practices that we're now using at at Nova Scotia Power. Next slide, this is essentially how the how the 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 smart meter project works. So basically your smart meters record your usage data and then they communicate that wirelessly and they communicate it through a wireless network that that the meters themselves can, so four times a day, what they'll do is they'll they'll take all the information that they've captured and they basically take it in 15 minute snapshots. They'll take a 15 minute snapshot of your electricity usage. They'll package it all up and every six hours they'll send it back through our wireless network. And the wireless network really consists, you'll see in the top right hand corner, a pole. Essentially, we have devices, they're called connected grid routers. They're about the size of a small piece of carry on luggage and they're mounted on on the top of utility poles. And essentially what they do is they will wirelessly talk to the meters and pull back that information back to our head office at Nova Scotia Power. We take that information, store it in our in our databases and the information technology. I mentioned that that piece of the project and those servers and information technology and the systems will then package up and in some cases they'll use the information for billing purposes. But in other cases, they'll they're able to use that information to help us better manage the grid and also manage things like when we have storm scenarios, we have power outages. The meters themselves are able to communicate when they lose power. And so that's very valuable in terms of power restoration efforts, knowing where and which customers have have gone out, how long they've been out. And in many cases today, what happens is we send trucks out to try and figure out where we where we have power outages, they'll restore a feeder, but there may be one or two houses at the end of the line that has a tree down on the line and those customers might get missed unless they call in and and let us know that they're out of power. And with smart meters, we will know exactly who's been restored. Once we restore a feeder and if there are two customers at the end of the line that have trees down on their on their loops, we can, we can then roll trucks more effectively and more efficiently to get there and get those customers restored restored sooner. I will say that if you do happen to be in the downtown Yarmouth area, you can actually see what one of these devices look like. There's actually a couple in the town of in the town of Yarmouth itself. There's many more in the outskirts and some of the more rural areas. But there's one actually on the corner of Stars Road and Brunswick Street. It's closest to the Civic Address 88 Brunswick Street. So if you were to walk by and look up, you'd see a small box. It's about the size of a street light. So if you if you weren't looking for it, you'd probably miss it. But essentially it's a, it's a white square box that sits on the end of a yardarm similar to a similar to a street light. And that is the device that that collects information from the meters and it's and it's secure and a private network. So it's not, it doesn't use customers wifi, it doesn't use the internet. It's all very, it's all very safe and secure. It's basically a private network that Nova Scotia Power has built to keep that information safe and secure. And so once the network goes out, then the meters start to roll out. And then, as I'd mentioned, the the other piece of the project where the information technology is being being developed, what will happen in 2021 is we will start to turn on that technology. And so what that means is right now we we put the smart meters out there and they will continue to be read manually by meter readers the same way as your legacy meters are today until we're in a position that we're ready to turn on that technology. And that will probably be, you know, about halfway, you know, the first half of of 2021 will start turning on different regions. And it'll probably be in the order in which in which the meters were were upgraded in a in a particular area. So we are getting ready right now to move into Yarmouth proper. I believe we're on the outskirts. So we've got some smart meters that have gone into the Barrington and the Pubdico area and I believe Port Maitland, which is part of the municipality of the District of Yarmouth. And I think we might have done one or two in Yarmouth itself, but you probably haven't seen too many trucks around, but you will start to see more trucks and potentially technicians in the coming weeks as we as we cycle through and start to swap out folks' meters. Next slide, Mary? And so what will essentially, what what customers will, you know, safety first goes without saying, Nova Scotia Power, very safety conscious organization. And essentially what happened with the pandemic is mid March, we would have pulled all of our meter installers out of the field. And as we got better line of sight to what the public health directives were and how we could keep both our technicians and our customers safe, we then went back into the field early part of June and with with new protocols and procedures. So for the most part, there's not a requirement for a technician to actually have close contact with customers to 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 swap out their meters. But there were requirements related to the warehousing and how they pick up their meters and and deliver their meters at the beginning and the end of day that we needed to work through. And we developed new policies and procedures to make sure everyone is safe and and new PPE. Incidentally, our our meter technicians do wear a full a full face shield when they're changing out the meters. And that's a safety precaution that was in place pre pandemic, but now they actually wear a mask as well as the face shield. So very safe and they go through extra efforts to keep themselves and customers safe, maintaining physical distancing distancing as well as PPE. To date, we've done about 154, as of end of the year, 154,243 meters across the province. That's about 30% of of the entire province. And we do in the neighborhood of 1700 to 1800 meters a day. So when they do show up in their community, you know, they will be there and gone in in a couple of days for most communities. Multiple teams will go up and down the street and, you know, we're able to very efficiently and quickly get get customers upgraded by doing that. Next slide, talk a little bit about the meters and the meters themselves, safe, secure, highly regulated. So a lot of people ask questions around, you know, is this going to increase my my bill? And the shorter answer is no. So all meters in Canada are regulated by Measurement Canada, which is a division of Industry Canada. And Measurement Canada basically is the the federal government agency that makes sure that all weights and measures for for multiple products, but electricity, they have a specific division just for electricity. And they have to certify that, A, that our meters are, they have to certify that the meters will measure accurately in Canada. And so the manufacturer, our manufacturer is is one of the largest manufacturers of meters in in North America. It's a company called Itron. They have to submit their meter design to Measurement Canada. Measurement Canada has to certify that. And then on top of that, their manufacturing facility has to be has to be Measurement Canada certified and they have to take samples as they're producing meters. They have to take samples and make sure that they are measuring manufacturing to that specification. And then every meter that you will, that is being deployed in Nova Scotia will have a Measurement Canada seal on the back. And that is very similar to the current meters that are deployed in Nova Scotia. So from a measurement perspective, a lot of a lot of checks and balances in place to make sure that they measure the right things accurately. And that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing effort, both from Measurement Canada and Nova Scotia Power perspective. As I said before, the data is all encrypted. So and it is a proprietary network that has been built by Nova Scotia Power and that keeps the information safe and secure. There's no charge for customers. As I said, there is, this is a positive business case. So the capital cost is part of Nova Scotia Power's overall capital program and the operational cost savings and benefits that are delivered in future years more than offset the ongoing operations costs as well as the upfront capital cost of of that project. So this is, this is part and parcel of keeping with Nova Scotia Power's commitment for rate stability and also giving new functionality for for customers along the way. In terms of what you should expect to see and what your constituents should expect to see. So Nova Scotia Power does mail drops. So they have, we have little mail cards like this. You'll see a picture of one on the slide here and I'm holding one up for people that are looking at my video. We generally drop them about 30 days before we go into an area. So it'll depend on where you are in that particular area and where you are on the schedule. But you'll you'll get, you'll get something in the mail. We've also done bill inserts and automated telephone calls as well as consistent updates of our website as to where we're going to be and when we're going to be there. On the day of the upgrade, what's going to happen is technician is going to, is going to knock on your door, step back six feet and if you answer your door, they're going to explain that they're there to to upgrade your meter, answer any questions you might have. And then the whole process of actually doing the upgrade itself will take about 15 minutes, 15 minutes or less. You do not have to be home for your meter to be upgraded. So if the technician knocks on your door and then and you're not at home, they will hang a door hanger and let them know that they are in the process of upgrading your meter. And then once they're done, they will leave another door hanger to let you know that they were there and did that work to your meter. The technician itself, you will lose power for about five minutes while the technician is pulling the the meter off and putting the new one on. So it'd be a very short power outage. Interesting to know that when the technician pulls off your old meter, of course, they're going to record the outread on that meter to make sure that you're accurately billed for the energy that you've used. They're also going to take a photograph of that meter. So if a customer does dispute, say, they don't think that we measured the the energy accurately, we are able to pull up a picture of of the outread on the on the on the old meter that's been removed and use that to have a conversation with with the customer. So so very safe and accurate. And then the new meter goes on, which they also take a photograph of. They also take a photograph of the of the customer's meter base. So from a customer perspective, not a whole lot you have to do, just be aware that we're there and you're going to lose your power for about five minutes. If you do come to the door and there's a reason why you can't, you don't want to lose your power for five minutes. Let's say you're on a conference call like I am right now and I don't want my computer to go dead during the the course of this conversation. I would simply tell the technician that I can't, I can't have the meter replaced right now. And they will make an appointment with with the customer at a mutually convenient time for the customer to to do that upgrade. So trying to be as a as a customer focused as as possible. In terms of opt out options, so customers do have the option if they don't want a smart meter, they can opt for non standard service. And essentially what that means is that they don't want a smart meter for whatever reason, we won't change it out for them. But at some point in the future, there will be a charge associated with that because we do have to maintain. We will have to go out and continue to read that meter manually and there will be a cost of that in terms of, we will have to have a technician on a truck that will have to go out every 60 days and and take that meter reading. And there's a cost to that, which is borne by the customers that are choosing to to opt out. Most customers, we've had very few, I think it's less than 2%, 1.9% have said they they don't want to opt out and that's fairly standard. When we look at the experience in jurisdictions like Ontario and Quebec, they were in and around 2% well and 2% as well. And it's primarily customers, you know, they're 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 not familiar or don't like new technology. And so they they'll they'll basically say, no, I don't, I don't, I'm comfortable with that technology. You don't know anything about it. But what happens over time and what happened in Ontario and Quebec and other jurisdictions is it starts off at 2%, but then once people see that there's nothing, you know, fundamentally wrong with the technology and it doesn't hurt them, more people will opt back in and generally goes down to less than 1% over the course of over the course of the first couple of years of any smart meter upgrade project. But we do offer that option for customers if they do, for whatever reason, feel uncomfortable with the with the technology. And just to sum up, before I open the floor to any questions you might have, oops, I lost my last slide, Mary. Yeah, just just to sum up, you know, the smart meters are safe, they're secure, they're accurate. There's multiple benefits for customers as I've mentioned. They measure electricity accurately and they're able to to give that the information usage back to customers. So one of the important things is that as a utility, we're able to bill more efficiently, but customers are now able to see their energy in in 15 minute increments on a daily basis. And so as a consumer, you're able to now go in and and play a more active role in in how and when you use electricity. And for, that's important for individual customers, but it's also important for for business customers and municipalities and other large consumers of of electricity. Now you can, you can have a more accurate and defined view of when you're using that electricity and that can help you manage your electricity costs and become more efficient in in how you in how you and how you use electricity. So that concludes my remarks this morning and I'll open the floor up if anybody has any any comments or questions.
I see your lips moving, John, but I don't hear anything. I just didn't want to interrupt any of you. I see Gerard LeBlanc, you have the floor for any questions?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Jamie there and Mary and Amy. I just had mine upgraded about 30 minutes ago.
Oh, fantastic.
It didn't, it didn't take long. He said that the power was going to be out and I I put everything off and all of a sudden it was back on. It was that that fast.
That's great to hear.
But in 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 saying that you, I think you mentioned that this wasn't going to be in running until 2021. So 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 are they going to keep on reading this meter physically every every two months?
Yes, that's that's right, Gerard. So so right now we're in the process of getting the meters out across the province. So they're not 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 all parts of the province yet have their meter. And during that phase, during this phase, we are continuing to read the the smart meters manually. So we haven't turned on the the smart, so to say, so to speak. But that's something that will happen in 2021. And that's because as as we're rolling out the meters themselves, the physical assets, we're also doing the information technology upgrades in the background that that people can't see, but we're building, you know, all the servers and systems, a meter data management system that is able to handle all that information. So that technology build and the IT systems and the integration work that that happens to to make everything kind of work seamlessly is happening in the background in parallel.
Yeah, so you're you're absolutely, absolutely 100% sure that this is not going to happen like it did out west there, that the power bills are going to go way up?
I am, I am sure as sure that Measurement Canada is a very stringent regulator, as is the UARB. And and I can say that, you know, if 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 I I can't see something like that happen, given the checks and balances that have been in place. And and as I said, a lot of key learnings from things that happen on on prior deployments. You know, sometimes when you're, when you're one of the last jurisdictions to go, you're able to get, keep the key learnings from other other provinces that perhaps didn't do it so well. And I feel pretty confident that Nova Scotia Power being a, being a, let's call us a fast follower. You know, not, sometimes you don't want to be the first person on a new technology. And definitely, you know, Ontario would have upgraded theirs back 2000, 2000, 2007, 2008. So they've had it in place for for quite some time. Quebec went in 2015. So I feel like this is a good time for Nova Scotia to be making this move because we get to learn from, we get to learn from others' mistakes.
Yeah, well, so next year, if I compare a bill that's that's hot, that's if it's higher next year than than it was this year, I'll say Jamie is going to pay the.
Well, I'm going to make sure Mother Nature is very cooperative and has a very mild winter next year. If I could only do that. As as you know, there are many things that influence customers' bills, but if your bill does go up, it's not going to be because of the meter. It might be because of the weather or it might be because you got a heat pump, which I encourage you to do if you don't have one already. But, you know, the, it's not going to be because there was something defective with your, your meter.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other councillors? See councillor Lauren Cushing, you have your hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Warren. Presentation was very good, but I've been hearing, you know, through the grapevine about power bills going up. And you already explained that, but still you hear that kind of rumor. You hear a kind of rumor about the, the health risks. You explain that also, where are these rumors coming from? Why, why had that started or can you answer that sort of thing or just?
I, you know, it's, it's one of those things, I think, a lot of people spend a lot of time on social media and on the internet. And basically, anyone, anyone can post anything on on the internet and on social media. And and that's essentially what happens, right? And so I think in a lot of cases, people read things, they'll read things on the internet or they'll read things in social media that don't have a lot of factual foundation or factual basis. In some cases, they may take their own personal experience and and attach it to something that perhaps they shouldn't attach it to. But it's, it's a great question, Lauren. I don't know if I have a good answer for you, other than to say that, you know, it's fairly common that you will have these groups that coalesce and, and say certain things about certain pieces of technology. And it's happened in other jurisdictions. But I will say that in a jurisdiction like Ontario or Quebec, they had the same type of people say the same type of things. And it starts off that two percent of people don't want it, and then it goes down to one percent, and then it goes down to the less than one percent of people. So and I think that's because people, you know, it, it, it comes and and the sky doesn't fall. And, and then, and people say, okay, well, maybe, maybe we're a little bit off base there. But, you know, we, we do give customers the ability to opt out if they feel uncomfortable. And and everyone has, you know, everyone can make that personal choice.
I can probably chime in. From the perspective of the the billing question, I can probably add a little bit of context that's unique to our jurisdiction, which I think probably has has fueled some of the the questions and rumors of recent. And so when the pandemic began, of course, as Jamie mentioned earlier, meter reading and a number of operational roles were suspended. And so in order for Nova Scotia Power to continue to issue bills to customers, that data was estimated. And so depending on the timing of when customers would have received their estimated bill, if it so happened to coincide with the community that was also getting their, their meters changed out, those customers would have seen a discrepancy between their estimated bill and, but between the estimated bill and their true bill, mixed in with the fact that they may have gotten a smart meter. We have dealt with a number of customers on an individual basis to to basically clear that, those, those questions up. But I think that's where a lot of the the early conversations about having a higher bill would have come from. And it solely is a function from, from protocols from COVID nineteen and estimating the bills in the meantime.
Okay, I can, I can relate to the the bill situation with our community hall. We haven't been operating our community hall since the COVID nineteen set in, of course. And we got a, a power bill that was, was very high. And it was, it was estimated from the, from the previous year when we had all the construction work going on and and lots of power being used. So of course, some of our executives get pretty upset over that. But, but, but we did contact Nova Scotia Power and hopefully they get it straightened out. Number two, relating to people being conscious about, about the health of these, of these smart meters that affect on, on you. I don't know, I'm trying to think who's there old enough to remember, oh, Morris is old enough to remember when their first microwave came out. There was a big concern about that, that the microwaves, what they're going to give off is going to, you know, really harm your health and whatnot. But it's, the microwave is a part of today's society. So, you know, I wasn't picking on you, Morris, but I, you know, we are in the same generation, I guess.
Yeah, interesting thing about that, Lauren and and Morris is that, you know, microwaves at that time would have been a new technology. Smart meters are not a new technology. They've been around for, for fifteen years now. And the wireless technology that that they use is is no different than the cordless phone. So if you have a cordless phone in your house, it's the same type of, it's the same type of frequency and technology. It's the same type of frequency and technology if you have a set top box for your TV provider, East Link or or Bell Alliance. You know, it's, it's been around for ages. It's the same type of technology and baby monitor. So it's, it's, you know, it's been, been around for quite some time. And as we mentioned, the meters do go through a lot of regulatory, one, one of this, one of the regulatory hurdles that they need to go through is it has to comply with Health Canada Safety Code six, which is the, the safety code for our RF emissions, radio frequency. And so it complies with, it complies with all those Health Canada requirements. And it's, it's less, less, less radio frequency emissions than, than, than a baby monitor. So very safe, been around for a long time.
All right, any other questions? I see our C I O, Victoria Brooks, has her hand up. You have the floor, Madam C I O.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and councillor Allen. I'll promise not to be too long. Thank you for your presentation. It's, it's great to get the context around these initiatives that impact the community and and that everybody's talking about. So thank you for your time, team and S P I. My questions relate around to some of the pieces you shared, Jamie, in your conversation with us about how the smart meter program fits into the utility's overall long term strategy. So I'm not sure if if this is the part of the team where this question lies, but maybe if it's not the right place, you can help us have the conversation with the right people. So you shared in your presentation that the smart meter program might have a a long term impact on the grid with respect to better leveraging clean energy opportunities. And I'm sure you're well aware that this particular region of Nova Scotia actually has your oldest, smallest capacity infrastructure in the whole province. And we have large scale industrial opportunities, both with clean energy and with our seafood processing sector. And we know that the capacity of your grid is is one of the small barriers to fully leveraging those opportunities. So if I think about the investment the utility is making in this smart grid program, how can that investment, which is being borne by your customers in our region, return opportunities to our region by way of improving your grid and opening up opportunities for us?
Yeah, so I'll, that's a, that's a great question, Victoria. It's a very, it's a very loaded question, but I'll, I'll talk a little bit about, I know, some of the initiatives that are happening, not within the project team per se, but on the regulatory front. So I do know that our regulatory team are currently looking at new rate structures and new tariffs that are basically being enabled by smart meters. So, so essentially, today, we've got very, Nova Scotia Power is very simple billing tariffs because we have to go manually read the meters. But I know our regulatory team is looking at different types of tariffs that would make more use of time of use, which has, which has specific applications for industrial and business customers that would allow them to to shift their usage to to the lower peak and lower cost time periods. They are actively researching what some of those tariffs might look like and have got a, a proceeding in front of the U A R B now in in relation to time of use tariffs. And they're proposing, I believe, some pilots because we, we're not, we're not yet done. The smart meters are not yet fully across the province. But, but my expectation would be that you will see new and different rate structures that without smart meters, you wouldn't be able to implement them. And so it's happened in other jurisdictions where they'll make more use of time of day rates, have specific rates, particularly for large industrial and business customers that will afford them opportunity to shift usage to time periods when it's not impacting the peak, peak usage period, which is, which is the bottleneck for for Nova Scotia Power. So I can't say what those rates are now. I do know that there are folks at our company thinking about it. I do know that the board, the U A R B has has directed us to, to, to file what we're doing in in that regard on an annual basis. So I would expect that you will see new innovative rate structures. That's one example of, of something that would benefit business and or industrial, but also residential customers. The other big, you know, from a smart grid perspective, the other big initiative is is outage restoration. So I was at a presentation before, I believe, the Chester Community Council not too long ago. And our, our vice president of distribution showed how wind speeds in in Nova Scotia have gone up over the last ten years. And I was, I was surprised by basically the number of days in which wind speeds exceed eighty kilometers an hour is, is the point at which it starts to damage the electrical infrastructure, which has a big impact on, on all types of customers. But with smart meters, of course, your power restoration efforts are much improved because you'll, you'll know when customers go off kind of, I don't want to say in real time, but you'll have a much better, a better understanding of when customers lose power and you'll be able to restore them more quickly. And so that's an example of today, when we have wide skate, wide scale power outages. You know, it's, it, our, our, our biggest challenge is getting the right resources to restore customers in the, in the, in the right sequence. And in a lot of cases, we don't know, customers are out until they call us. And so you've got trucks, you know, might have, might have passed by customers that were out, didn't know they were out. That sort of thing won't happen in the future because we'll have a good, a very good understanding of when customers are out and how we can get them most quickly restored.
And I'll just, I'll just add, C I O Brooks, with respect to your question around the, the aging infrastructure in the western part of the province. So we have, you know, as, as part of a responsible utility, we do, we do do regular maintenance and analysis on the, all of our assets and the infrastructure across the province. The last number of years in the western part of the province, we've seen some great success with our tree trimming efforts. And so that's sort of one component. But with respect to the actual physical assets and the lines, we are in the process. Our engineering department that looks after the, the overall asset management program is in the process of doing an infrastructure data gathering and analysis for the western part of the province. As we do know that that area of the province, as you mentioned, has some, some older lines and infrastructure. And in order to support growth, you know, economic growth and development in that part of the province, we're factoring that into our, our asset management strategy and sort of ensuring that that's being considered when we look to make those capital plans to put before the regulator. So I do know, we work at at arm's length with our engineering department. So I do know that that's on their docket for review and analysis. But as you can expect, that's a multi-year type of initiative.
Could I ask what the investment value is for the smart meter program roughly? What's, what's the cost of rolling out the program?
The, the, the cost is one hundred and thirty three point two million. That's the, that's the amount that was approved by the U A R B. That's the upfront capital cost, the overall cost of, and then there, there would be some operational costs going forward. I believe the net present value of of the overall cost is in and around one hundred and sixty nine million. And then, of course, there's the net present value of the benefits that accrue. So there's, there's operational cost savings and and benefits that are delivered throughout the life of the project. And they amount to, I believe, just under, just over two hundred million. So the net present value, and I, and I'm, I'm look, I'm, I'm thinking now, I think it's in around thirty nine. I'm looking at Mary on the screen, but I know she might not have the number in front of her either. But it's, it's, it's thirty plus million from a net present value perspective. So a lot of, a lot of cost savings are associated with our fleet of meter readers. So we do have a, we do have upwards of, of fifty plus meter readers across the province. We have a fleet of trucks that need fuel. And we have been working with that group of employees now for, I want to say, oh, for over five years, but more, more, more frequently, I guess, in the, in the last, in the last eighteen to twenty four months. Our human resources team is is actively working with those employees that will, whose positions won't exist once we do turn on the technology and actively working with how we transition them to to new and different roles within the company. So a, a lot of the cost savings is on that manual meter reading. And that's, that's a big cost for Nova Scotia Power. And so by saving that, it, it flows back to, to, to customers. So I believe our, we would spend upwards of six million dollars a year just in meter reading costs. And that's, and that doesn't include maintenance or any of the other costs. That's just the pure operating cost. So it is, it does have, that's the, the single biggest cost savings, but it has other savings as well across the business. So positive business case and we're, it fits with our rate stability strategy.
One more question, if I could, Mr. Chair, and then I'll be done. So as the utility redeploy's those human resources, I'm, I'm expecting those fifty jobs are spread out across the province. So, and I'm also expecting that the business model, even though you're going to redeploy your current team through attrition, that that team will shrink. What types of opportunities would continue to exist in the western region with Nova Scotia Power? Or are all the employment opportunities going to now centralize?
No, the, I, I think the, the, the skill set of most of the employees, you know, they're very, a lot of these employees are very skilled field resources. And so a lot of the roles that would, they would be moving into would be roles like customer planner roles. So customer planner roles would be folks that would go and assess as, as new, new homes or businesses are built. They would go and do an assessment of the infrastructure to connect new customers into the grid. So a customer planner role, for example, would be regionally, regionally dispersed. And so that would be an in-region role. I do know that there is a, there was a training program that our human resources team, so we, the human resources team have been very active in, in, in kind of managing the, the human resources element of this. And P L Ts is another, so power line technicians, sorry, I'm using, I'm using industry jargon, power line technicians, which are the men and women that drive the, the big bucket trucks that you'll see around in your community. We do have a, a program in place where some meter readers will be transitioned to be trained as, as power line technicians. And those power line technicians would be, would be regional roles as well. So you, you need power line technicians everywhere. So in, in some cases, there, there, there are some roles that are, say, in Halifax at, at our headquarters. So I do know that we've got a, a former meter reader that's joined the smart meter operations team. So as, as we, as we get ready to turn on operations and turn on the technology, one of the meter readers had a background in information technology and they're now joining the, the operations group. So we're trying our best to, to find, to define roles for, for those folks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I think councillor Allen, did you have any?
Well, Victoria nailed them all. No, I'm, I'm going to go back to just the, the opt out options, just for clarification. If you're not home, you're getting the meter. Once the meter is on the house, if that person is one of the few that, you know, really doesn't want the new technology, can it go back? Or is it going to be a charge to them? I, like a couple of my other fellow councillors, I've got friends of mine that are a little paranoid about the new technology and are hearing story, horror stories of that first bill being huge and things changing. And, and some of them are saying they wish they'd have opted out, they'd like to go back the other way. Is that an option? And how, how would it work if it was?
Yeah, so, so if you do want to opt out, you can go to the website or you can contact our contact center today. And you can opt out before we get to your community. So it doesn't have to be that meter technicians are actually in your community. If you do opt out before we get. uh, meter technicians are actually in your community. If you do opt out before we get there, um, your meter won't be changed. Um, so it gets taken off the, it's taken out of the, uh, the list of meters to be changed out. And, uh, the, 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 the old legacy meter that you have on your home or your business will, will stay where it is. Um, if you, if you do, uh, opt out after the fact, so you've, you've got a smart meter, um, you, you then decide that you want to opt out. Um, there's two options. One option is we will go off and we will, we will basically turn off the communication technology in that meter, um, essentially making the smart meter a dumb meter. Um, and in some cases, at customer request, we will swap out and give them an, an older meter, um, if, if we have them. So the older meters, of course, uh, the, the electrical mechanical meters haven't been manufactured in about 10 years. And so we don't have a ton of them in stock. And, and as, as we pull more of them off homes and, and they're, they're, they go to recycling, um, we do have some of the, uh, digital meters, uh, in stock and we will maintain a, a small stock of that. But if we have it and the customer requests, we'll do our best to try and, uh, give them a, an old meter.
So, so just to clarify this, so essentially the new meter, if it's not turned on to be a smart meter, is there any difference between that and the digital meters you're taking off?
No. In fact, if you, if you were to take the old, if you were to take an existing digital meter and put it side by side with a smart meter, it's very hard to tell them apart. If you, if you were to stack them on a table, the smart meter is about a, it's about an inch thicker. And that's because it's got, um, it's got technology in it that, uh, that, that measures more things. And then it's got communication technology that's, that, that, uh, that measures it. But, um, it's essentially, they look very similar and, and they're made by the same, uh, manufacturer. But the smart meters, as we mentioned, uh, brings a lot of benefits. Um, and I think the, the other thing that, you know, customers are opting out now, but I think once we turn the smart meter technology on and we make that information available to customers, I think what you're going to, what you're going to see is that people are going to want to see their usage. They're going to want to be able to manage their usage and they'll be able to go to a website and log. The same way you go to our website today and you log into your account, you see kind of, um, your bill and you see your usage, but your usage is just a bar. Now you'll be able to see it basically every day and, and how you're, how you're, how you're using the electricity. And now you'll be able to put in a, in a much better position to, to manage your, uh, your energy usage. And so I think once that happens, you're going to see people that will, will come back into the fold. And if you're talking to your neighbors, Counselor Allen, I, I didn't encourage the, you to communicate to them that, um, there's no boogeyman inside those meters. Uh, they're measurement, they're measurement Canada certified, uh, very, very well regulated. And, uh, Nova Scotia Power, um, you know, we're, we're, we're taking the, we've, we've got the best, best technology there is in Canada right now because we're one of the last utilities to, uh, to roll this out. So, uh, safe, secure and, and, uh, and, and it's going to give a lot of benefits to customers in the future.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Jamie.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor. Unmute your mic.
Right. Uh, thanks, thanks for, uh, coming down to, to Yarmouth and giving the presentation. It's a lot of information. Um, I will, I will say that the technician did visit my home, was great. Um, I'm, I'm still a bit taken aback when people step back quickly at the door, but he did do that. So that's good.
That's great. That's good to hear that. We like to hear that.
Yeah, absolutely. Following the protocols to the T. So in any event, Yarmouth swapped out. Um, having, having said that, just a little bit more, a couple more questions about the actual technology, the hardware, that type of thing. So, so you have data collection device, uh, devices spread, spread through the communities. And, um, I, I, I'm wondering, is, is that, do those data collection devices communicate, uh, back to wirelessly? Or are they hardwired into a system through fiber op or high speed or low speed internet? That, that's the first question.
Yeah. So that's a great question. So, uh, it's all wireless. So the, uh, the connected grid routers, uh, CGRs is the, is the acronym we use here internally, which are the, I, I call them the cans up on the pole. Um, they communicate with the meters, uh, wirelessly using 900 megahertz, uh, technology. It's on licensed spectrum and it's all encrypted, uh, and, and proprietary to Nova Scotia Power. Once, once the, um, once the information gets to the router, it's then uses wireless backhaul. And so, uh, we're utilizing Bell Canada's network, um, and it's cellular data, but it's a, it's basically a, um, uh, how do I describe it? It's, it's basically, we have a segment on, on, on Bell's network that is private and distinct to, uh, to Nova Scotia Power. So we do enough business with, uh, with Bell that we're able to have this. Um, it's basically a private, I, I call it a private lane on a public road. Um, so we've got our own private lane on this, on this public network, um, that is just for Nova Scotia powered, uh, information. And, uh, as I said, it's encrypted and, um, we also use that technology for other, uh, parts of our network. So we use for SCADA and, uh, other, other components of, uh, our distribution network. So it's an existing, uh, it's an existing network that we've had with, uh, with Bell for some time. And, um, as I said, safe and secure, all wireless.
So I, I guess my comment and perhaps through, back, back through our, our chair to the C A O, I, I like to see us look into this technology a little bit more because, uh, and it's a separate issue from Nova Scotia Power, obviously, but, uh, we, we do have very, very poor internet service in, in most of the municipality, including even, um, my area, which is very, very close to, to Yarmouth, it's a suburb essentially, um, District Five. And, uh, maybe this technology is part of the solution. So perhaps through the RIN, we could ask those questions and see if we can get, uh, you know, hasten the, hasten the deployment of, of proper internet around the municipality of Yarmouth. Having, having said that, um, because it's apparently partly reliant on Bell Systems and Bell Technology, you're, you're integrated with that, obviously, I just said. So will everybody be getting, having the opportunity for a smart meter, even in our more, um, rural areas like, uh, Carlton, Kemp? So are, are, are there any impediments for you to, as far as the technology goes, the hardware, for you to reach all of our, our residents?
Yeah. So that's, that's a great question, Counselor Cunningham. So, um, so where we put, where we, so we got, we, uh, we work with Bell to get a copy of where their network is. And then we did a survey for each of these connected grid routers to make sure we actually did have coverage. The, the, the connected grid routers themselves don't have to be that close to the meter. They can be a couple of kilometers away in some cases. So the meters will send the message, uh, not through the cellular network, but, but basically through this proprietary, uh, private wireless network to the connected grid router. And then the connected grid router will then backhaul that through, through the cellular network. So in areas where, uh, you may have sketchy cellular coverage, uh, we won't put the connected grid router there. We'll put it, you know, we'll, we'll put it 500 feet or, or we'll put it in an area that does have good coverage. And then we'll rely on, on the meters to kind of get that information over the air. And the meters themselves are able to, uh, communicate over that distance. And when they aren't, so let's say you had a, a particularly rural community that, you know, you, usually the meters will communicate, you know, they'll, they'll pass the message through, through the meters back to the connected grid router. But if you did have an ice, a really isolated and there was no, nothing in between, we do have the option of putting what we call a, um, a mesh node base. And that's essentially a range extender. So basically, um, I, I would, the, the analogy I use is essentially you're taking a meter and you're putting it way up on a pole, which allows it to, to give, give more coverage and get to those more isolated communities. So we do have a, a number of, um, really rural communities, I call them remote, in the province that, uh, we think this is probably less than 500 meters throughout the whole province that we'll have some difficulties getting there. We may not be able to offer smart meters to those customers. But as far as I can tell, uh, not that many in your neck of the woods. I think Northern Cape Breton is, is more of a problem for us. Uh, Pleasant Cove and, and Meade Cove, there's, there's a couple of areas in Cape Breton where they don't have good cellular technology and the communities themselves are, are very isolated in terms of, there's long stretches of road and highway between, um, where, where the, the electricity is provided and where we need to get the data. So we've got a few, uh, you know, nothing's perfect. Um, but I would say that in and around 500 meters across, uh, ac- across half a million customers is, is a pretty, uh, is a, is a pretty good ratio.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Patty Dirkie.
Thank you very much, everybody. Very informative and, and helpful. Uh, I think Trevor basically covered, uh, what I was going to ask in areas where there's poor cell service and we do have them. Um, you know, well, there's, there's one side. One is that can you install the smart meters in that location? And two, with what you're doing, could that actually boost the cell service? Um, so, so thanks. Thank you for that. Um, and I'm not sure that you can actually answer that question because, or, or maybe there are areas already that have had that service and, and, and would that happen?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it won't, it won't have any impact on the cell service. So that the meters themselves don't use, uh, cellular technology. They, they use a, a different type of wireless technology to get the information to that connected grid router. Um, and we've been, we've worked with Bell to kind of put those routers in places where we know there's coverage. So we've gone out and done site surveys to, to make sure that there is cellular backhaul, uh, cellular data available in those areas. So unfortunately, um, you know, in some cases, that means that we had to put connected grid routers in areas where, um, we didn't necessarily want to. We would have liked to have them closer to the customer, but we had to put them further back because of the, the limitations of the cell network. So I do, um, I am empathetic with your, your situation. And we've had the same sort of discussions with Bell about how can you improve this so that we can get these things closer to customers. And so, uh, you know, they're, they're a big company and, and we're one voice, uh, among others. But, uh, I think if you, if you keep asking for it, the demand's there, you know, some, someday maybe we'll, uh, we will see an improvement. But, uh, our, our project is not able to, uh, wag the dog, I think, in the, in terms of where Bell puts their cellular towers, unfortunately.
Right. But I'm just, you know, yeah, I, and thank you for that. And I do understand that. I'm just wondering if that, uh, you know, could be an opportunity for Bell to, you know, since they're already doing these things, could they improve what's there now?
Yeah. Well, we've certainly put it.
Ask them.
Yeah. Yeah. No, that's a, that's a great, a great question. We've certainly, uh, had conversations with them about, uh, what they can do to, to kind of extend their coverage in areas. But, um, it's, uh, it, you know, that we.
If I could, if I could sort of add to that, so there, as Jamie mentioned, there are other areas of the province as well that are in the same kind of boat. Um, certainly after Hurricane Dorian, from the provincial perspective, um, I know, uh, myself and a number of other colleagues sat on a provincial debrief, um, with the, the EMO Center. Um, and that would have been one of the main, um, one of the main items that would have come up for review. So, um, we do, uh, Bell sits on this, EMO Critical Infrastructure Committee along with Nova Scotia Power and other critical infrastructure owners across the province. So it absolutely, um, is, is an item that's, uh, been identified. Um, so I know there have been pockets where we are working in tandem with them, um, as they try to advance their plans. Um, where Yarmouth and, and surrounding areas fall within their plan, I'm not sure, but, uh, it is absolutely something that they are aware of. And, uh, and I'm sure they're, they're working to put together a, a multi-year strategy to improve the, the network across the province.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Madam C A O, you have the floor.
Thank you. So just as a follow-up to Counselor Cunningham's, uh, query, um, about, you know, leveraging this opportunity maybe for better communications. Uh, Jamie, how much data, what's the volume of data that the smart meters are, are sending off to the, to the smart grid routers?
Oh, gosh.
Is it megabytes, kilobytes, terabytes?
It's, it's, it's kilobytes. Uh, it's not, it's not a, um, so, yeah. So I, 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 I think I know where you're going with this question. Um, the network we've built is a purpose-built proprietary and it's a narrowband network. So it's basically just, it's designed to basically take, uh, these snapshots that the meter provides. And the meter is very efficient. So, um, we're, we're talking about pack, uh, package sizes that are in the kilobytes, uh, range. Um, so it's not a, it's not a bandwidth intensive, uh, network. And, um, it's not something that would lend itself to, uh, you know, providing internet or anything like that. It's not really designed for that. Um, it's very narrowband, but it's also proprietary and secure. So, um, it's a closed network, which means you don't want, uh, anything other than your meters, uh, using that, that network. And that's how you keep, that's how you keep it safe and secure and encrypted and, and, and whatnot. So it's a purpose-built, um, and the packet, packet sizes are small.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Um, obviously, uh, we've, we've gone a little bit over our time, but this is a very important issue that a lot of people had a lot of questions on. And, and I had a whole bunch written down here, uh, in regards to, uh, can customers see power usage, uh, reduced rates and peak hours, uh, wireless, wirelessly, uh, rate stability and, and all those questions were answered. Thank you very much for that. Um, but I do have one quick question in regards to, uh, measurement Canada certified meters. Um, are those meters, do they have random tests in the field to say, to tell Nova Scotia Power that they are actually doing what they were designed to do or, or read the, the power going into your home properly? Is there random tests on those?
There are random tests, uh, uh, deputy warden, uh, but they happen before they go to the field. So, um, they are tested as they come off the manufacturing line. Um, and they are manufactured in South Carolina. So, um, not, not that far away. They're not an overseas manufacturer. Um, they are, are, are put on test boards and they're sampled and, and measured. And when we receive the shipment of meters, we receive the test cases with that shipment. Uh, we receive kind of a, it's called a advanced shipping notice. And so our manufacturer will say, here are the meters we're going to send you. And here are the test cases. Um, and generally, uh, you know, we have our meter shop. Our meter shop is a measurement Canada certified, uh, entity. And so they look at the test cases and if they saw anything out of the ordinary, we would, we would, we would not accept the shipment. So we, we, before the meters even leave the factory there, we see the sample test and, uh, and ensure that, uh, they meet, they meet the required standards. Um, in any event, the manufacturer probably would not ship them to us if they did not, if they did not meet those, uh, those sample, if they did not meet those sample tests. And to date, we've taken delivery of, so we've installed about 153, 154,000 meters, but we've taken delivery of, um, I want to say over 400,000. Uh, so there's, a lot of these are sitting in warehouses right now, uh, a warehouse in Dartmouth and a warehouse in New Glasgow. And, uh, none of, none of those batches of meters have, have failed, uh, test cases.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And my final question is who can, either any counselor staff member or members of the public contact if they have any additional questions?
Mary, you want to take that one?
Sure. I'm going to speak to that. Um, so back to our opening slide, uh, we provided you contact information regarding the dedicated line that we have for elected officials. Um, and as Amy indicated, that's, uh, 24 hour service that we provide. And it's certainly important in, uh, weather events and such that we operate 24 hours. Um, but that line is, uh, both email and a phone line for elected officials only. And outside of that, our customer care center, uh, has a team that responds closely to a wide range of subject matter and, uh, a team that specifically specializes in the smart meter project subject matter as well. So, so any, um, cases that any of you have working with your constituents or your, your own personal concerns around the project, please reach out to either, uh, gov@nspower.ca or give us a call and we'll work through your question, finding the right person to give you the right answer. And, uh, if you have any constituents that you don't want to, um, ask the question on their behalf for, uh, you can have them call the, um, customer care center, which is able to respond and direct the call as required. And, uh, since I'm speaking, I'm going to add one other interesting point. Uh, we had a lot of conversation right now about cell service. And I want to let you guys know that I'm in the middle of downtown Halifax. I'm one of the busiest and most famous streets in the city, living in a new apartment building. And because there's so much concrete and glass, uh, in much of the new construction, most times I have one bar on my phone and even some days I have no service. So, um, I'm not feeling the pain to the extent that you are. Uh, one of my tricks is I have to go over and stand on my patio and try and find service. So, you know, even in the city, um, there's limitations and we're working closely with, uh, providers and specialty companies to, uh, install cell boosters in this building so that, uh, we have the safety and security, um, and the ability to use the cellular networks that we're also reliant upon now. Yep. And I'm also going to add that, uh, following this, I'm going to email all of you, um, a frequently asked questions, uh, handout that we've put together. That's going to speak to the, some of this information and provide all of the contact information that I just made reference to.
All right. Thank you. For that.
You're welcome.
Uh, I always, as the C A O knows, uh, I always. I always, as the C A O knows, I always ask a question that I already knew the answer to, because I do remember that you would stated that at the very start, but just to make sure that someone said, well, I don't remember the information that was given or who to contact. Well, you had obviously given it at the start of the presentation, and I had it here on paper, but just to hammer, hammer the issue home. And in regards to cell service, I I'm one of those ones that live out in the area. I represent the Carlton, Kentville, Forest Glen areas. They have absolutely no service out there, and we're certainly working with Bell Canada in regards with a couple of applications to improve that service through developed Nova Scotia. So hopefully, we were supposed to have an announcement here. Actually, it was about three weeks ago from developed Nova Scotia about any possible improvements on their face too, and hopefully we'll have some good news in that respect. So Mary, Amy, and Jamie, I thank you very much for putting forward this very important and informative presentation. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Take care.
Guys, too. Take care. All right, we'll move on to the next idea, item in the agenda, business arising from the minutes. Item 6.1, private road maintenance charge by law P dash 086 dash 20. Who would wish to take that?
I can, if you'd like, Mr. Chair. If if that's what you'd like, you're the chair of the P A C as well. So if you prefer that I kind of lead off with this, then that. So as council's aware, the Planning Advisory Committee worked through with our interim planner Morris some ideas around how we could, as as a municipality, speak to the unresolved issues for residents on private roads who who struggle to find a framework for addressing the maintenance needs of those private roads. And the municipality has looked at this more than a couple of times in the in the last decade, and we haven't quite been able to deliver a draft program to council that made it through the approvals process. However, Morris leveraged some of his relationships with with some other colleagues around the province, and we looked at some models for other private roads that are as old as some of ours and have the variance in terms of condition and and build standard as we have on our private roads. And and we found a program in a municipality in the valley. We took it to the Planning Advisory Committee. And what you have before you today, Mr. Chair, is a recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee for a bylaw that would essentially, and I'm going to summarize, and I think Morris is probably going to pick up on some important detail, that creates a framework where where a community of landowners come together in a legal way, in an organized way. And they agree that they want to provide road maintenance, the municipality will, for an administration fee, issue invoices, receive payment, and remit back to a legal entity. And so you have a recommendation from the P A C, and you have a draft document in front of you. So maybe what I'll do is hand it over to Morris, and he can provide a summary of the important elements in the program that speak to the needs of the landowners, but also mitigate risk both operationally and politically to the municipality.
Is Morris, yeah, Morris, you have the floor. If you wish.
You're muted, Morris.
Oh, we talking now?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I think somebody shut me off. That was an interesting presentation before. Although I had to argue with, I didn't want to argue with Mary, but if she was in the center of the city, she'd be in Dartmouth, not Halifax. Anyway. In looking at the draft, process of drafting the bylaw that you have in front of you with respect to maintenance of private roads. We first established some principles that we felt should be followed and that would provide an opportunity for the private owners to get together and look after maintenance on the private roads. But also mean that the municipality was not really a participant except to be the enabler of collecting the money and then turn and signing an agreement with an organized group. And then turning the money over to that group, who then later on would report back on how it was spent. So the role of the municipality here is to be the enabler, collect the funds, and transfer the money to the property owners association. You charge an admin fee of 4% to cover up your costs, so there are no additional costs to the municipality. So there's no financial impact in the in the bottom line on the municipality's operating budget. You specify that you're not providing any other services, such as technical support or engineering advice or anything like that. And there's an annual review of the bylaw. In fact, you re-adopt the bylaw every year with an appendix attached that lists the homeowners associations who are part of the process. And shows what the charges are. It's very open and very transparent that way. And it's very simple in that if a group is participating one year and they decide the next year they don't want to participate, they simply don't submit. Rather than getting to a process of having to go through a legal process of getting them off the books. So it works very simply, and it limits the role of the municipality. The applicant is an association that is formed by the owners under the Societies Act. They delineate the area that will be impacted. They prepare an implementation plan and a budget every year. Just like you do with your budget every year. It's a flat rate per lot that we're recommending rather than a frontage charge or a charge based on assessment. That's the simple way of doing it. And you can differentiate between a vacant lot, a seasonal home, or a year-round home. And we know from the work that we did about a year ago on your private roads, if you remember the report we filed. There are a lot of private homes that have, or private roads that have year-round homes on them. And some indeed are mostly all year-round homes. The association hires a contract to implement the plan. And then at the end of the year, when they come back, they report here's, here's what we, okay, and here's what we spent, and here's what we want for next year, so that if there's an annual review. I provided you with typical budgets, typical financial statements, and a typical annual amendment. It's not in in the bylaw itself, but it was in the previous documents that were sent. And the recommendation is that council begin the process of approving the bylaw, which would mean first reading at the next council meeting at the end of the month, and then advertising, and it could be adopted at the end of September. So it's done by this council rather than go over to a new council with perhaps some new E A C members and a few maybe new counselors. Hopefully, none of you, if you're re-offering, of course. The we've had a legal review and it's found to be a good bylaw. This bylaw is is principally built on the bylaw for the municipality of County of Kings or Kings County, I'm sorry. And they've had it for about six years now. So it's a pretty tried and tested bylaw. Had some amendments along the way, so you're getting the benefit of their experience. And they found it to be a, be a pretty useful document. And they're finding more and more private road groups are are coming in, in under the bylaw to so they have a way of maintaining their roads. This is year-round maintenance. We're talking snow clearance in the winter if there's a which is particularly important if there's year-round residents on here, so that if there's a need for say a first responder to get there, they can get there. So it's year-round maintenance and includes snow piling in the winter. So the P A C put a lot of effort into it. We had a meeting last evening, and as the chairman can tell you, there were a couple of amendments there that were typically looking at making sure the municipality was not putting itself in a position where they might be assuming some responsibility, and they were good amendments. It requires that two-thirds of the property owners agree to the submission that's being made. That's a little higher than Kings County. They require a simple majority. But your road maintenance bylaw for public roads, if somebody wants to say get a public road paved and so forth, requires the two-thirds majority. So it was felt that we would stay with that two-thirds majority and and keep it consistent between the bylaws. And I think it's it's a good, a good move, but it assures you that there's a good solid majority of the people who really want to participate in this program. I guess the simplest thing would be to answer questions if you have any.
All right. First of all, I'd entertain a, to discuss the discussion on this private road maintenance charge bylaw. I'd entertain a motion to recommend to council the first reading and a second, and then we can have the discussion, if any, on this, please. So it's moved by, what I seen first, Counsel Patty Dirkie, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you moved to move the, to recommend to council the first reading of the road maintenance charge bylaw P dash 086 dash 20 for first reading?
That is correct.
And I seen Counselor Lauren Pushing. I seen your hand up to second to that. So motion, motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the recommended, recommendation of that motion? Counselor Daniel Allen.
So, so just, just for clarification. If two-thirds, if two-thirds of the property owners form the association, the other third is automatically committed to, I guess, to the association?
That's essentially correct, Counselor. Actually, any five people can form a homeowners association. If they wish to promote a program for maintenance, and they have to get all of the owners together, and two-thirds of the property owners have to agree to the program that's being submitted. But it can be initiated fairly early by having a homeowners association. You'll recall that in the new subdivision bylaw, we mandated that the developer had to form a homeowners association once five of the properties were sold. And then he and the, and the owners, he is the owner of the remaining lots. And those five would be all have voting membership in the homeowners association. And then as 50% of the lots were sold, then the homeowners association was transferred to the, the property owners themselves. And the street at that point was transferred to the ownership. So that was kind of a lead up to having them being able to apply under a bylaw like this if council agreed with the bylaw. So that they too could, even if it's a new development, they could apply and and collect money and maintain their brotherhood. But this also makes it retroactive to all the private roads. So essentially, your question is, yes, that's correct, but it can be initiated by five people getting the start, and then they have to get the other rowers together and build on from there.
Okay, yeah, I was just, that's, I think you answered my question, yeah. Because once you have two-thirds and and we start collecting, we are collecting from, from 100% of the property owners.
That's correct. And and if somebody doesn't pay their invoice when it's sent, it eventually becomes a lien on their property, not right away, but after a couple of years, it becomes a lien on their property. Just like.
Counselor Allen, if, if the homeowners association wants to make application to the municipality under this bylaw, and let's say, what they have to do is they have to provide a survey or a sketch that shows the properties that are in the catchment area. So let's say there are 12 properties in the catchment area. A homeowners association has to incorporate under the Societies Act, there would have to be five of them. But in order for the municipality to approve their application, we would actually have to have nine of the property owners agree to the rate. They may not be members of the association, but nine of the property owners would have to agree.
That's absolutely correct. Getting that, it's just, it's the, it's the last three property owners that don't want to be a part of it are sort of forced into being a part of it, being a part of the collective.
That's right. And that's why this issue is coming before council, because we have communities where density is increasing and the number of consecutive days where people are residing on these private roads is increasing. And there, there's a bit of a struggle to get things done. And so your communities came to you when we did the subdivision bylaw review. And and they expressed to you that this is a gap, and so the P A C is working to help you fill the gap if you so choose.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Patty Dirkie, then Counselor Lauren Pushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question has been answered.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lauren Pushing. And Counselor Gerard LeBlanc.
As our C A O had alluded to, that this has been going on for the last decade about trying to figure out this private road situation. And I think we're falling on, on on the end result. I just want to thank our council and our bylaws committee, the work of the C A O, and of course, the work of Morris Lloyd, and in guiding us along this, along this route. It was very difficult for me to grasp why some, some private roads were, were neglected. Lack of better words. And it was also hard for me to accept that of all the, I think it was 150 private roads or more that are not exactly private roads, but because of the number of T I Ds on that extended driveway, they become a private road. So I was very disappointed on on that part where they, where you drive down a so-called private road and your, and your vehicle is hitting branches all the way in there and back again. But however, in saying that, I think it's a, it's a right step in the right direction. And with any new subdivisions being built, we can avoid a lot of frustration as some of our residents in the municipality have, have brought forth and you know, and and hopefully they'll, they'll have a better understanding what the private road is and how it can be maintained. Because it is, it was a big concern, and and hopefully we've crossed the bridge now to to make things better in the future. So thank you to everyone.
Counselor Gerard LeBlanc.
This has nothing to do with the, with the, with the bylaw. It's just curiosity. But do they hire a private company to maintenance, the, to do the maintenance and and then we pay it? Or does the T I R do the work and they, and then they're dealt?
I can answer that. That would be up to the homeowners association, who they would like to maintain the road, whether it be a private contractor, whether it be they, they just haul in a load of gravel and one of the residents level it out, but it certainly wouldn't be T I R.
Yeah, okay.
We can't get them to maintain their own roads, let alone a private road. I hate to be smart about it, but it's true.
That's good. I was just curious. That's all. Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions? If not, entertain a question on the motion to move this forward to council the first read.
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Item number seven, correspondence. I seen. Motion carried. Item number seven, correspondence. I see none. All right, move on to item number eight, eight point one, report.
Excuse me, John. Could I interrupt there just for a second? I was uh, I, I wasn't on when, when you asked if, if anything could be uh, if anybody wanted to add to the agenda? And uh, I, I'm just wondering if, if I could put uh, special events or?
Uh, we can do that councillor after we come out of the in-camera. Uh, if it's all right with council, I'll ask then.
Oh.
We can do that.
Mr. Chair, I also have, I also have an item that I thought was on the agenda, but is not. So at that time, I will also ask.
All right. We'll move on to item eight point one, stock reports, Hebron Business Park, phase two. Um, minimum CAO, or you all have that in your package.
Thank you, Morris. I appreciate your work and the work at the PAC. I, thank you.
Okay.
That's exciting.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, as one of council's six strategic priority areas and one of the last big pieces from your strategy for, for your four years is uh, is around trying to figure out what the investment requirement would be and what your options are around further developing the Hebron Business Park. So we've been working with engineers to do the geology study and generate some class D estimates around further developing land owned by the municipality um, in the Hebron Business Park. And so what is before you council is, is a bit of context around what we found out with, with the work we did with the engineers. And you know, the, the status in terms of, you know, what's happening now with that land. And you know, essentially, we have 14 hectares of undeveloped land in, in the business park. And we're, we do not have that land involved in any municipal program. Um, it is sitting idle at this point. So it's neither costing you money nor is it generating money, you know? So the notion is what's the opportunity cost um, for, for not developing that land? And what would be the investment required to take advantage of that opportunity cost? And so I can share with you, you know, anecdotally that as our economic development officer works with the private sector. Um, and in this, this was my experience too, when I was in that field was, you know, by and large, investment inquiries are far greater for a, um, built infrastructure that's available for lease or buy or at least shovel-ready lots. There is very little demand in the marketplace for what we call total greenfield development. So that's raw land that has, has no development on it, no driveways, no landwork, um, just complete raw untouched land. And so that's what drove council to take a look at, you know, considering an investment um, in the municipal infrastructure by way of roads, uh, wastewater, storm water and streetlight installation um, in addition to possibly some groundwork um, to make lots uh, more marketable. And so we took a look at those 14 hectares from, from a number of different perspectives. Primarily because complete development of all 14 hectares, which means all of the land is shovel-ready for a building. The roads are built, the wastewater is installed, the storm water is installed, the town of Yarmouth water utility lines are installed, the streetlights are installed. To do, to do it all um, right now is approximately $5.7 million. And so that's a significant investment for, for the municipality to make today, in today's dollars. Um, and, and with no, no data to support how briskly um, those lots would be sold and that buildings would be built and the investment would be returned to the ratepayers by way of increased commercial assessment. So when, when I, I took a look at the data and the information with the economic development officer and the director of finance, we, we collaborated to deliver this report to you, which took a look at, you know, developing everything or doing partial development. And so when we took a look at doing partial development, we took a look at it um, in a number of different ways. For example, there's discussion in the briefing note around um, some lots that are highly visible because they can be seen from the 101. We took a look at it uh, from the perspective of there are wetlands involved and so, you know, maybe we want to look at the impact of developing near or around wetlands and what kind of flexibility do we have now that we might lose um, in the future? Um, and then we took a look at, of course, land that's immediately adjacent to what's already developed. Um, and we also took a look at existing vacant land or underutilized land in the already developed uh, part of the park. And so those scenarios that we took a look at range in price from 3.7 million um, you know, down to about 1.9 million dollars in terms of undeveloped land. And then of course, there's land that's already developed, that's, that's ready to build on um, in areas that are serviced. Then we also took a look at the work in relation to your overall context. So we wanted to be sure that we uh, made, did a reminder for you in the briefing note around um, commitments that you, that you have on your radar. The rural internet, um, the Cape Girardeau master plan, um, a possible expansion uh, at the Mariner Center and a bridge to that expansion. We're doing condition assessments on the South Ohio community field beds. Um, and we have work in progress for active transportation projects both at the Milo stretch and also um, actually in the heart, in the airport stretch, which isn't listed there. Our current debt load is $2.7 million. Um, and so that's a 4.5%. And so under the financial conditions indicator, that, that's fine. But if we were to do the full extent of the development of the Hebron Business Park, plus the projects that are on that list, we put ourselves into a precarious position with respect to debt load. And so I took a look at, you know, well, what could we do? What could we do to move forward? And so at the end of the report, you'll find my recommendation um, that, that I think moves us in the right direction. Um, it may be a, a little more slowly than some people would like. Um, but, but I do believe it honors the stewardship practices council has, has been working under. And so firstly, um, we should begin immediately to relocate um, our Public Works um, Salt Shed over to um, our maintenance um, center at the, at the Hebron Park, um, at the Rotary Center. Um, and that will free up a lot for sale that isn't, I can't, I can't market it. I can't put it for sale right now because we have municipal operations on site. Um, we, we do, we do have land that's leased to the private sector and there's a series of baby barns on that land. And I would submit to council that um, because we are working with private investors to increase the um, increase the, the level of investment in the park and the status of the park, I would submit to council that it's, it's timely now to have a conversation with that tenant um, and look at um, constructing a more permanent building for those operations. Um, that's more reflective of the type of construction that's found in the park. The lots on the west side of County Crescent, um, that they're not actively being marketed. There's no real estate sign on them. And so I would, I would suggest that we go ahead and do that. There's also an opportunity to work with the existing tenants in the park um, and, and generate um, some working capital to raise the profile of the park uh, through, through a business improvement district. And so a business improvement district is a tool that's available to communities. Um, and it allows the private sector uh, to create some capital in partnership with, with the local community to do beautification projects, um, maybe to do attraction projects. It just creates um, a mechanism where the, the investors, the tenants in the park can have an impact on moving the park forward and thereby increasing their business profile, their, their market saturation and so forth. And then the final piece of the recommendation is, is that um, in the next capital investment plan conversation, um, that we look at um, making an investment under four point uh, one, which would take a look at developing land that backs on to existing development. So it would see the construction of a new road and the associated services. But it would essentially um, look at developing lots that back on to the Lobster Trap Company, back on to Rhino's Towing, um, back on to Mr. Lee's property. And so just basically organically take the next step further into those um, 14 hectares that are undeveloped.
Councillor Paddy.
Thank you. I think before any decision or even discussion is made, we have to, it would be helpful for us to know, because we are now into August. Um, due to COVID, have we had any issues with uh, collecting taxes? Um, and requests for um, assistance? Or have we gone ahead and done okay with this? I think that's our first step to know that before we invest anything anywhere, we have to know how we are.
Yep. Great question councillor Durkey. So um, we did take a look at collections uh, last week and actually collections are as good uh, as they were at this time last year. So we, we have no negative impact on our tax revenue stream um, as we thought, you know, we might see. We did receive two inquiries um, about a possible relief program. One was a private resident and one was a business owner. The business owner has since paid taxes in full and so has the private resident.
Great. That's, that's wonderful to hear. So, thank you. Um, and I just want to add to that, that um, we know that um, people have been requesting particularly warehouse space is really lacking in Yarmouth County. And we've been discussing that for quite some time as to whether, you know, we would, should put up something that people could have access to. And um, you know, I think that's on the low end of the scale in terms of cost. If we can do something and might have quick turnaround in terms of um, bringing in revenue through the tax base. Um, and uh, so that's something I think which is mentioned in, in, in one of the, the scenarios to, to look at that. Um, because I don't think at this point, we do have, it's up for discussion certainly, but we do have a lot of things on our plate. And, but we do want to move forward with economic developments. So we have to be really careful at this point how much we do invest in this, but I think we should be um, we should be moving forward with some of it.
Any other questions, comments? Councillor Trevor Cunningham and councillor Lauren Cushing.
Yes, uh, I agree with councillor Durkey's comments that we should move forward. Having said that, I, I do agree with the Seo Brooks assessment that, you know, we need to balance this with all our other priorities. Um, so actually if there were federal, are there federal, are there potential federal and provincial matching dollars on any of these projects? Because if that, if that risk is spread out among, among those three revenue uh, streams, that would be an entirely different thing uh, as far as, you know, an investment in, in, in the park. And that would mitigate a lot of risks for our, our, our ratepayers.
So there, there is an, an Invest Canada um, agreement in place now. It was a ten-year agreement that was signed between the federal government and the provinces in 2018. Nova Scotia's full allotment is fully committed. So um, we wouldn't have that piece. We do have gas tax funds that come to us every year and, and some of the work that would be required um, may be eligible to, to use some gas tax dollars. Um, that being said, depending on how council wants to move ahead, um, you know, there's, there's probably, there's there's a lot of work to do to get ready to do the work. And so there could be some funding streams available um, to help offset that. So for example, if council um, accepted uh, my recommendation and point number five was moved forward to the next capital investment plan conversation, um, we would be able to have the engineers drill down on exactly what would that cost be to do exactly that piece of work? And so, you know, we might be able to leverage a few bucks uh, to help offset the cost of the engineering there. But the five-point recommendation actually um, is, is not a, a lot of work because um, it's, it's basically coming back to council with information on what would a business development district look like? It's getting costing for you on what it might look like to build a building as per councillor Durkey's comments. Um, I, I think what it does do, if you accept the recommendation is it get, it gets our operations out of the park because we don't pay taxes to ourselves and we can move on that immediately. Um, it gets some for-sale signs up on the lots, which generates interest um, and inertia. And so, you know, brisk demand um, may impact council's decision um, when it looks at a capital project next spring in its um, CIP conversation.
Councillor Lauren Cushing, you're next.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. The old saying is, if you do nothing, you get nothing. Uh, thank you minimum CAO for outlining this, uh, working with other staff to, to, to come up with a plan and, and some rough numbers of uh, what it's going to cost to do things. Uh, this is a great opportunity for us to uh, to uh, develop things in phases. I've been a strong uh, strong um, advocate for phasing in, in projects instead of trying to spend all this money at once, uh, which will put us in a, in a hard financial situation. But um, with the recommendations you have and they say we start, we start with the, with the smaller, the smaller, more affordable things that we can do to make the park look better is a very positive stat. Uh, it's a, this definitely goes along, as far as I'm concerned, with our asset management that we've been working on. And uh, so uh, it gives us a better idea of uh, what money we have to spend and how can we get money, how can we leverage money to do things? So it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing to have a plan. But we got to understand plans can change, can vary a little bit from, from one way or the other. And uh, which is, which is the purpose of a plan. So I think we're, I think we're going down the right road again. I just hope we can continue doing so. So thank you Victoria.
Any more comments or questions? Victoria, do you have a direction or is there something that you need in regards to a motion to move forward to council to, to move forward with the recommendations or one or more?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I do think this is important work and I do think, you know, a recommendation to council from committee, the whole um, would, would be appropriate.
All right. Is someone willing to make a, a motion that regards councillor Lauren Cushing?
I'll make a motion that we move, that we forward this proposal to council for uh, acceptance or uh, what's the proper word I'm looking for, Victoria?
I think you got it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Cause I'll, I'll, I'll make that, I'll make that motion then.
All right. Moved by councillor Lauren Cushing to move this stock report to uh, council for acceptance. Do I have a second there? Seconded by councillor Gerard LeBlanc. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Okay. Item eight point two, policy reviews, eight point two point one, fees policy, F dash zero four four dash zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's a housekeeping amendment to the policy council uh, with respect to um, the subdivision bylaw. So we did get word from the province of Nova Scotia that our subdivision bylaw meets, meets all the requirements that needed to meet. Um, even though it didn't require ministerial approval, they do review those pieces for us. And so included in the new subdivision bylaw um, is the engineering component for any new roads that get built. And so we now need a mechanism to charge back the fee for that engineering. And so highlighted in yellow for you on the fees policy, F dash zero four four dash zero two is the proposed amendment that would allow us to collect back the engineering costs for um, reviewing roads in proposed subdivisions. So Mr. Chair, I submitted to committee the whole for recommendation to council.
What is the wishes of the council, councillor Cushing?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to move this uh, these revisions to our, to our council meeting, uh, the next meeting. It's a very, it's a very important, uh, very important step. And, and again, um, thank goodness that we've, we're, we're moving along with this uh, subdivision bylaws and, and whatnot. So I'll make that uh, that motion.
So I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. So you're making a motion to So I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. So you're making a motion to move the fees policy, F-044-02, to council? Is that the motion you're making?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Yes, it is.
Do I have a seconder on that motion? Cut by Counselor Trevor, seconded by Counselor Trevor Cunningham. All right, a motion on the floor to move budget management policy, B-, sorry, fees policy, F-044-02, to council. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Item 8.2.2, budget management policy, B-210-20. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So council, this is new territory for us, a brand-new document for you to take a peek at. So your context is this, Bill 92 amended the municipal government act to flip municipal spending powers 180 degrees. Prior to Bill 92, Section 65 of the municipal government act prescribed the areas where council could spend money. And after the amendment, Section 65A and 65B and C were created. And so basically, it sets out the fact that council can spend money wherever it wants to, under certain parameters. And so the municipal government act makes references to council's policies, budget approvals, and so forth. And so what I was directed to do after Bill 92 received royal assent was to get to work and try to provide a policy framework for council that would help, help council with some, with some guidelines. You know, there, there's nothing in the policy that is a new power or a new, a new way we do things. But it basically puts in writing the parameters under, under which you will approach your, the financial piece of your, your governance. It talks about how we will respond if things don't go according to plan. There are very specific requirements, for example, for me as your CAO. If, if I authorize overspending, I need to report back to council that that happened and why it happened. I need to provide a recommendation on, on how to right the ship. As you know, municipal councils are not allowed to incur a deficit, a debt, yeah, a deficit year over year. So let's say, for example, something happened this year, and we had a million-dollar shortfall. We have to make that up next year. We cannot carry that over year to year. And so the accountabilities are in this process that, that lay out what we do when things don't go according to plan. But it also gives council the flexibility to pivot in the middle of a budget year or at any point during a budget year. If, if something changes and council wants to change our finance strategy, then we come together and you make the motion and you change the finance strategy. What I really like about the policy, which by the way, we borrowed from a municipality in another province, I think Manitoba. What I like about this policy document is, for the reader, for the public, for council, for, for staff, it actually gives a really great context around governance and budgeting for municipalities. And it helps kind of keep us at the 64,000-foot view in terms of what we use these tools and these processes for. Talks about thresholds for overruns, and it keeps them small. It talks about preserving our reserves. So if we make a decision to move ahead with something from a financial perspective, it gives us guidance in terms of, we can only do that so long as we preserve our, preserve our savings at a certain level. And so what that does is, the municipality, the District of Yarmouth is, is very healthy financially, and our financial conditions indicators are very good. And this policy is designed to help preserve that standing within the province of Nova Scotia. So it's, it's our, the first time you've seen it. I'm sure there's lots of questions. It's new territory. There was not another municipality in Nova Scotia that had exactly the tool you were looking for. So we, we may not be where, as close to the bull's eye as you need us to be. And so our conversation today is, is around getting you closer to that bull's eye that you were looking for.
I know I have a bunch of them, but, but obviously, the rest of you, I've seen Counselor Lauren Cushing. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the floor to comments, starting with Counselor Lauren Cushing, and see how many of my concerns or comments are answered. Counselor Lauren, question, you have the floor.
Actually, Deputy Warden, that would just, thumbs up for, for a good job by our CAO. Again, this is, this is part of our, I would, I guess for lack of better words, our master plan of how we can run our municipality very efficiently and knowing exactly what, what we're going to spend money on, but also to keep, keep us fiscal responsible. So that's, that's all I was doing. I was just giving a thumbs up on the good work that Victoria's done to date. Thank you.
All right, am I going to start this off?
I think Counselor Cunningham has his hand up, Mr. Chair.
I didn't see it. I was actually looking at him.
His little, his little blue hand is up.
Little blue hand. I don't, for some reason, I'm not seeing the raised hands on.
I think you have to click the participants icon, and you'll see that module appear on the right-hand side, maybe of your screen.
Okay, so, yes, I, I'm thinking lots about the, the bylaw, and we'll have some additional questions as, as time goes on, certainly. But the one comment I will make, and it has, the, the, this, this policy does clarify that, is that, and it's come up several times over my time as counselor, is that, once we pass a budget, there are allocations within that budget for spending on specific things. And the message to, that we send as a council to our CAO and staff is that you may spend those dollars within the parameters of the budget. So they, they manage the day-to-day spending of that. They need not come back to council for that. And I know one of the confusions was when there were allocations made for a new building on, on the property, which I voted against on several occasions, and voted against budgets because of that. Ultimately, we, we renovated an existing building in our, in our rec park, and I think that was a certainly better use of money. We, we made better use of a building that we already had, and, and that, that in the end was, was probably a good solution. Having said that, those budget allocations, some of those dollars were spent by our CAO. And, and those expenditures came as surprises to many counselors. But having said that, those budgets were approved, and the CAO moved to, to spend those dollars to, to begin building the building essentially, preparing groundwork and that type of thing. And some councils were caught by surprise. So this does make it very, very clear that the understanding is, once we approve a budget, and if there are allocations in that budget for things like that, when the CAO starts down that road, that's permissible. Having said that, I think that a lot of thought needs to go in our budgeting process that we're, and that we're very, very clear between our, among ourselves, and between ourselves and the CAO as to what the way forward is, because some of those dollar amounts are very, very large. They, they can be in the millions of dollars. And I think we need to think out very, very clearly as to what direction we're giving to our CAO when we approve the budget in terms of those, those big items that she'll, she'll manage moving forward. So those are my comments at this point, and I've got to think about the document deeply before ultimately approving. Thank you.
Absolutely. I actually, I'm going to point out a couple of concerns that I have, and these are, in no way, I know this is the first crack at this policy, but I want to ask CAO one quick question in regards to what, what is our operating budget usually, year for year?
This year, it's just north of $13 million.
There's also the 5% of, that the CAO can make decisions. I'm trying to find that in here, because I read it last night. This, this is quite a document, by the way.
7.1.1, Mr. Chair.
7.1.1. I knew I wouldn't buy it. What is that part? It, it gives authorization to the CAO to spend, I think, was it up to 5%?
It, it is. And that's total operating overrun. Now, on our current level, that would be $600,000, and that would put us in an operating deficit, because we have a forecasted surplus of $11,000 this year. So what that would do would trigger clause 7.4.1, which says, "In the event a budgetary deficit is likely or imminent, the CAO will report to council at the next available council meeting and provide a report that outlines the reasons why a deficit is projected if no action is taken. The report will include the options available to council to remedy the likely or imminent deficit."
Yeah. I, I'm having a little bit of problem with that. I would, along with this 5% threshold, I'd like to see like a number put there at the, I, I personally would like to see it a lot less, because some projects are obviously quite large. And I do have, it, it's basically what I'm talking about is the thresholds for overruns. That, that's what I'm concerned about, because at the end of the day, we're the ones that have to make a decision on how that overrun is paid for. And as you stated before, as per the MGA, we are not allowed to run deficits. Now, that could run into hundreds of thousands of dollars. As we all know, I think it's $60,000 per one cent of assessment. Is, so the assessment would have to increase by one cent to gain $60,000, if it come to that. Now, I do realize that we can juggle monies around in different projects and stuff like that. But unlike Counselor Trevor Cunningham, I need to, need to read over this document a little bit more before, before I would even consider moving this forward to council. That's just one of the things that, that I have. I'm also concerned about Bill 92 that the province passed, which I'm not too happy about, which gives us a lot of authority to spend monies where, as far as I'm concerned, we should not be spending money. And one of them would be the health system. It's, it's very troubling to me in that respect. And I'm going to open up the floor. I do know Counselor Patty Durkey, you had your hand up, so I'm going to open the floor to you before I make any more comments. But right now, at this time, I'm not comfortable with moving forward with this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with you. I'm not comfortable moving forward with this yet. I think, I think we need to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. One, one thing we have to keep in mind, there actually, there's two things. One, there seems to be a lot in here where the, the CAO has a lot of flexibility and determining, and I'm thinking that some of these decisions, I think some of the, the terminology needs to be, sorry, folks, reversed, where the council makes some of these decisions. It says determined necessary by CAO or the direction of council. I mean, I understand the, the need for information from the CAO. But again, we have to be careful with governance, that the, the decisions on some of these come from, from, from council. But so that, so, so there, I'm concerned about that wording. The other concern I have is that, you know, there are times throughout the year where things come up that, that we may or may not agree with, that may not be in our budget. And I would like to ensure that we do have some flexibility that, that if something does come up that we deem necessary or extremely important, that, that we can take from those reserves to, to, to go ahead with some particular project. So again, I, I'd like to see a little bit of flexibility. It's, it's like, you know, if we need to find the money for something in particular, then, then we want to be able to do that, or the next council wants to be able to do that. Thank you.
Counselor Trevor Cunningham, I'm sorry if I missed anyone else. Then I see Counselor Lauren Cushing. So Counselor Trevor Cunningham, then Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Right. So, so what I'm hearing generally, and to build on my, my comments previously, and some other counselors about needing a little more time, I, I think, I will say, conceptually, I, I like the fact that there'll be a budget document, because I think there's been a lack of clarity around budgeting, the budgeting process, who does what, who makes what decision. So what, whether or not ultimately we all agree with what's in here or not, I think that's for another time, to everybody's point. Having said that, it's, it's a lengthy and important document. And I agree with others, probably not the best thing at this point to move forward to a regular council meeting to begin the approval process. But what I do think we should have, because it's very long, and will likely take a long time to wrap our heads around and understand, and a future council, of course, should, should have a training session around this particular policy. I, I would think that we'd want to have, I'm thinking, maybe a day-long working session around this to, to, because again, there are, there are intricacies in the, in the policy. One piece is related to the other and that type of thing, and also the legislation. It may be good to have a working session prior to discussing this again at a, at a council meeting, just so each and every one of us has a, a, a good fundamental understanding of what this tool does and what it doesn't do. And again, I, I have mentioned historically, there has been some confusion among counselors over a long, long period of time about who, who does what, and what happens after you approve a budget. So I think this will bring clarity to it. So I think, you know, on balance, this is very, very positive. But as far as the process goes, I, I think that we will need like a, a, a working session for us to get our, our heads around it, talk about it. And then we can bring it back to the, the council table for a more fulsome debate and passage at some point in the future. So those are my thoughts. I don't know what others think, but that, that seems reasonable to me. It's not, it's not a small nor simple document to approve.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Warden. Again, I think the budget management policy is very important, part of our master plan. And of course, there was no doubt in my mind that it's going to have to be, because of the length of the, of the, of the, of the, of the document, it's going to have to be discussed, there's going to have to be things that are going to be agreed to or disagreed on, and things will have to be changed if, you know, if we see fit. But the overall purpose of a budget management policy, I think, is a very great idea, and I think Trevor alluded to that, and John brought up some good points too. So it's, it's a very important piece of, piece of our, of our management system that we're, that we have to deal with. And yes, I still say it's a, it's a good policy, budget man, but we have to, it certainly has to be discussed and worked on, and it will take some time, as, as Counselor Cunningham had mentioned. So, thank you.
Any more comments or suggestions? So I guess I heard from the council that they would like a little bit more information on this. One, one concern that I also have is, here we are at the very end of our term, and, and the new council, if we decided to move forward on this, which obviously we're, we're not going to, a new council would really have to sit down and bury into this whoever, whatever council members are sitting around the table. So I, I personally think it's a good start. I don't mean to beat up on, on the CAO or anyone who took this forward. It's just,
Not at all.
I, I, sometimes what I think I know, what I actually know are two different things. And actually, it opened my eyes a little bit in here, and then it got me asking some questions on the 5%. Well, that 5% can be quite a large figure. And I was thinking about having of up to 5%, or up to, say, X amount, whether it's 50, 100, $200,000, or 5%. That's something that I like to see. And I read over this once fully, and then I started picking at it again when I had some spare time last evening after the PAC. And I think Counselor Trevor Cunningham is correct that maybe we should sit down and have a working, or the council, whenever they look at this, whether it's this council or another, that we sit down and have a working session around this, of what exactly some of the things mean in here. So what I've heard today here, the consensus is to move this back to, to stop and do a little bit of work to it and, and maybe have a discussion about it later, or maybe it might fall into the new council. Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is one of those policies that we need to go through line by line, so that we can make sure that we understand each of so that we can make sure that we understand each of those.
All right.
It goes along with, you know, a workshop, as Council Cunningham suggested.
Yeah. All right, no more discussion on this item? We'll move on. Item 8.2.3, festivals and special events, policy number F-045-20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the last time committee of the whole saw this document, there were a couple of directives that were given to us. Number one was to take the document back and simplify it in the sense that have the policy statement be separate from the forms and the filing and the actual process for registering an event with the municipality. So we did that. You see before you a policy statement on festival events, but you also see the supporting documentation for what a group or a person might submit to the municipality if they wanted to have it. Then the other question was, who, if any, of our neighboring units have a similar framework around this activity? And so the municipality of Digby, Clare, Argyle, and Barrington, and the town of Digby, and the town of Yarmouth are silent. So we would be the first to move ahead with this. So that's our economic development region, are those municipalities. So we would be the first municipality to move ahead with this framework. Now, the drive, as I understand it, behind looking at developing a policy for this, what came from two avenues. It did come from some questions within our community for people who have an interest in advancing our festivals and events opportunities and saying, you know, how do I do it? How do I do it well? How do I do it in the light of day? How do I do it legally? And, you know, we had bits and pieces around some of our development bylaws and noise bylaws and things like that. But we really didn't have a framework that spoke specifically to festivals and events. And then the other piece is around the way the province of Nova Scotia and the government of Canada views tourism as achieving our overall national economic development strategies and provincial economic development strategies. So the Atlantic growth strategy has five pillars, and one of those pillars is tourism and hospitality. So that's the federal government, and that comes down to us through ACOA. They advance the Atlantic growth strategy. The other piece is around the We Choose Now and Ray Ivaney's work and how the province has accepted some of those recommendations, and very clear measurable goals around increasing tourism within the province of Nova Scotia. So that's kind of the context about how we got involved in looking at this policy work. So what's before you is a representation of a policy framework and an administration process for festivals and special events in the District of Yarmouth that is as simplified as we can make it. It clearly states that it does not cover private family events. So if somebody's having a graduation party, or a wedding, or, you know, a family reunion, it doesn't cover that. And there's a little checklist in there that a possible applicant can go through to try and help figure out if the policy applies to what they'd like to do. So it's as simplified as we think we can make it based on the fact that if we move into this area and we pull the lid off, once we get involved in sanctioning events, we have to mitigate the liability issues that we then step into. And so it's as simple as we can get in terms of saying to the festival and special event world, "We're open for business, and we want to be able to tell the province and the federal government that, yes, what you're doing in our community complies with all of our bylaws, that we want to encourage your activity, but we do it in a way that mitigates the risk to the corporation, to council, and to the ratepayers." So I'm ready to hear your feedback to see if we got closer to where we needed to be.
Comments, questions, some council members? Council Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO. I think this is really a positive direction for the District of Yarmouth. And I think we're moving forward with that. I know there have been concerns in the past that we didn't have one. And if we do have one, then again, Nova Scotia Tourism can sanction and promote what we are working on. So, you know, there are a few things I have to go through again more carefully, but I'm thrilled to have this moving forward.
Council Trevor Cunningham.
Right, so I'll make a motion that we advance festivals and special events, bylaw F-045-202, a regular council meeting for approval.
All right, motion on the floor, seconded by, motion was made by Council Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Council Patty Durkey. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's a policy, not a bylaw.
Oh, my apologies for the miscue.
All right, Council Daniel Allen, you had your hand up.
So it goes back to what CAO Victoria Brooks was saying. So private events, so suppose I had an issue, well, I had an issue in my community where we had a private campground, pulled an event at their campground that went on until 3:00 in the morning, and I had some noise complaints. But they wouldn't have to file with us for this because it's a private campground.
Well, not just that, but it's not a special event. So it's a campground that's undertaking a program on their own premises. So, for example, when campgrounds have Christmas in July, they wouldn't have to register that under this program.
Right, so a July 1 celebration, again, wouldn't it have to be registered under this program as well?
Not where a private business has a program on their own premises. But let's say that campground wanted to broaden it, and the participants would not be the campers registered at that campground. Then it might trigger this policy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Item 8.2.4, emergency service provider registration, policy number F-046-20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is also a housekeeping policy body of work. So under the Municipal Government Act, we're to have our emergency service providers registered with us. And what we discovered internally is that while we may have had some form of registration years ago, what we do have is outdated. We don't have a policy governing it. And so what is before you is a policy statement on having our emergency service providers, which would be our volunteer fire departments and our ground search and rescue. This would not cover EHS or the police. Have them register with us, and the format under which that registration should take place and the frequency of that registration. So the registration would be updated annually when the financial statements are filed with us. The registration form is as approved by members of the emergency service provider community. It's come down to us through the Office of the Fire Marshal. You know, the policy statement is fairly succinct, and I submit it to you for discussion, but I do recommend it to council for approval.
Council Patty Durkey.
So I'll make that motion to forward this to regular council for approval, so that to forward the fire and emergency service providers registration policy, F-046-20.
Motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Council Daniel Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Other business, item 9.1, Develop Nova Scotia Round 2 Announcements. I asked to have this on the agenda. As we all know, Develop Nova Scotia, they had announced the Round 1 announcement for Internet Service Provider bill to improve the network. I think most of that work, and at least the municipality district of Yarmouth, has happened in Council Daniel Allen's district. And from my understanding, they're working on it now, and I guess the completion time is expected sometime the end of this year. However, we were told, and I can't remember who it was by, that the Develop Nova Scotia Round 2 announcements, which we're all eagerly anticipating to happen, was supposed to happen three weeks ago. And I'm not saying that to be smart, but that's actually, and I can't remember where we heard it. I don't know if it was from the province or not. So I'm going to ask Madam CAO, is there been any news on Develop Nova Scotia Round 2 announcements on internet service and cell service in the municipality district of Yarmouth and all of Nova Scotia for that matter?
Yep, thank you. So we had heard intel through our Economic Development Network that we might see the announcements in July. Now, in May, when Develop Nova Scotia published their update, they did say the announcements on Round 2 would be in August. So, you know, the information we had around possible awards in July was not from, oh, there's Council, was not from Develop Nova Scotia. And so I have reached out to the CEO of Develop Nova Scotia and had to leave a message. So, you know, I guess what I'd say is, you know, we may have heard that awards might come in July, but Develop's own communications do say awards would come in August. So, you know, I did make the inquiry. I don't have an update other than to say that, you know, based on what they have published, they're not outside of their timeline yet.
All right, as we all know, we had that presentation by Nova Scotia Power and their smart meters, and they also do rely on, I think it was cell service, they said, or indoor Wi-Fi, or their own dedicated service. So it's obvious that all in Nova Scotia needs this investment in our internet and cellular infrastructure because, as we all know, some of you are doing internet from home. And we all noticed that it's slowing down, and that's not including the people that can't even get it. My area has been asking me daily, when do you expect to hear an announcement? I said, "Well, I've heard July," I said, "but I'm expecting August." And just thank you, Madam CAO, for contacting Develop Nova Scotia, trying to get some clarification on that. Hopefully, we hear sooner rather than later. Is there any other comments on that item 9.1? Council Daniel Allen.
I just want to add, John, as excited as I am to see the maps, the maps of the project for Phase 1 get distributed today, I'm still a firm believer that we need it everywhere. So, you know, I'm really glad, you mentioned that it was getting put in my area, and I'm very happy to see that done. And the point is, it's just Phase 1, and hopefully Phase 2 will be moving on soon so we can get everyone else connected.
All right, there was no motions or discussions that come out of that, or recommendations to regular councils, just more or less an update. So that comes to this part of the agenda. I'd like a motion. I'm sure everyone, we've been here for a couple hours. I'm sure everyone needs a bio break or just a break to stretch your legs. So Madam CAO, what would be the process? Do we call a recess at this time for possibly 5 to 10 minutes? And then afterwards, we re-adjourn this meeting and then go into camera?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so a motion to recess, I would recommend maybe 15 minutes. And then in 15 minutes, you would reconvene the meeting. But a motion is required to recess.
Yes, I do. Madam C, Council Trevor Cunningham.
Yes, I'll move that we recess the council meeting for 15 minutes, at which point we'll return to move into an in-camera session.
Motion on the floor by Council Trevor Cunningham. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Council Daniel Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? All right, all right, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone. We just completed our recess. Our next item on the agenda item is item number 10, in camera. We have four items, so a motion to move into camera is in order. Moved by Council Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Council Lauren Cushing to move into camera. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Whoever's controlling the consensus can move out. Welcome back, everyone. We just completed our in-camera session. Is there any in-camera recommendations coming forward? Council Trevor Cunningham.
Right, I'll move that Modi amend the Internet Service Contract with our provider to provide an additional $21,000 to provide high-speed internet access to the business park.
Motion on the floor, moved by Council Trevor Cunningham. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Council Daniel Allen. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Is there any other recommendations coming from in-camera? Council Patty Durkey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a contribution of up to $25,000 to Acadia First Nation wastewater system.
A motion on the floor from Council Patty Durkey. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Council Daniel Allen. All those in favors, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Is there any other items for discussion?
Mr. Chair, there's an additional recommendation, consensus to write a letter to the Yarmouth International Airport Board.
Yes, that's correct. Is there anyone willing to make a... I, sorry, Madam CAO, I was under the impression that that was done by, needs to be done by consensus, not necessarily a motion?
That's right, yep. But we just need to confirm for the minutes that there's consensus to do that. So I put the material in the chat.
I don't see it.
Yep. Oh, I think I sent it to, I think I sent it to John here. There. Helps if I send it.
All right, there's also a consensus letter to the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission in regard to write a...
Yarmouth International Airport Corporation, please, Mr. Chair.
I always get them two acronyms mixed up, Yarmouth International Airport. Yarmouth, it says YAIC.
No, YIAC. That's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm getting tired, everyone, as you all know. Is someone willing to move that consensus and make it part of the record that this committee, the whole? Could you read it out loud, Council Cushing? Just so it's part of the record?
You're muted, Council Cushing. You know, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Let me do this again now. There we go. Have a letter to the Yarmouth International Airport Commission, consensus to write the board of the Yarmouth Airport and confirm Modi's continuation of the airport agreement to March 31, 2021. Modi's contribution for his 41% share of the municipal subsidy. The Yarmouth International Airport Commission Board be authorized to right-size the airport operations that align with the current economic environment.
All right, that is written into the record. Is there consensus to move that forward to the airport board?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Any dissenters? Hearing none. Sorry, Madam C.A.O., I missed that. I did remember that being talked about in camera. All right, is there any more agenda items? Counselor Gerard LeBlanc. You're on mute.
Is this when I'm asked to? To?
Is this where you ask to add any agenda items?
Yes.
I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping. Most generally, an addition to an agenda is done at the start of the meeting. However, it can be done, as per Robert's rules, at any time during the meeting. For any new agenda items to be added to the agenda, it would require a two-thirds vote of councillors present to allow this to happen. So Counselor Gerard LeBlanc, if you'd like to make a motion to get something spoken about on the floor, it would require two-thirds of the vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to just discuss entertainment outside for people. I find this time-sensitive because the summer's going fast, and that's why I wanted to do it today.
All right, Counselor Gerard LeBlanc made a motion to go forward on the floor, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. So I'm going to call for the question. We require two-thirds to add this to the agenda and discuss it. So question being called, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion passed by more than two-thirds majority. So Counselor LeBlanc, you have the floor. You have a new agenda item. We'll add it under 11.1.1. You have the floor.
Thank you, councillors. It just brought to my attention last week, there's a couple friends of mine, they went on vacation in Nova Scotia, and they stayed around Chester, Mahone Bay, Bridgewater area for their vacation, which they enjoyed. But the one thing that they really enjoyed on Saturday and Sunday was an outside concert with different bands. And it said that they had a sign, social distancing, and bring your own lawn chair or whatever. And they said the place was, it was big outside, and there was a lot of people. They brought their chairs. Social distancing was met. And why couldn't we do this here? We've got the perfect place, the lighthouse. And in saying that, probably, nobody's aware of this because you're not musicians, but there's not too many musicians working right now because every place is closed or there's no music. And this would be one way to get the people at the lighthouse. I'm not talking about myself because I'm busy enough. Other, one place that I'm playing, but there's all kinds of musicians that would be looking for some work. But that's all I wanted to say.
Any more discussion on that? I'm sorry, Counselor Daniel Allen.
So just a couple of questions, Counselor LeBlanc. The concerts that these people took place, and do they have to pay to attend them? I know right now Mile East is holding virtual concerts at Pahrumpa. And I see that they are actually selling tickets right now for the next concert. Very limited number of tickets because of the social distancing aspect. So I see it's kind of starting around here, but I'm just wondering, was it a free outdoor concert?
I don't know. I didn't ask. I didn't ask the question. But going the lighthouse, you could. You know, it's got a gate there, and, you know, you could charge a dollar or a couple of dollars.
Well, I'm just, the only reason I'm asking is because, like you said, the musicians are out of work, so somebody would have to pay them. So I don't know if this would fall under any of the protocol that the provincial government has in place as far as gatherings and things like that. I mean, providing you're providing social distancing, I'm very surprised that Mile East hasn't reached out or some other promotional company or even a couple bands got together and looked for some areas to try and hold something of this nature.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. But this couple was very... They really enjoyed it when they went to Mahone Bay or Chester. I don't know where it was, but they went to a couple of them there, you know. And whether they paid, I don't know. But people brought their own chairs, and, you know, there was, like, and they mentioned this was on a Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon.
Well, I, for one, am a big believer in right now, any kind of small community gatherings just to kind of keep people, I want to use the word sane, but just to keep people upbeat.
That's one thing that they, that's one thing that they mentioned. With this COVID-19 going on now, people are running out of things to do. They, you know, a lot of them don't want to go to a restaurant because of too close to people. And they can't go out on vacation other than Nova Scotia. And to try to keep the people in your area, and this is one event that could be used, and the lighthouse is the perfect place.
Any more discussion from any other councillors? Any input from staff? Before I open the floor to staff, I do have have a concern. As we all know, at the onset of this COVID-19 thing, we had one big weekend event that was supposed to go on, we all remember it, the coal shed. That has been canceled by the organizers now. I don't know if you're suggesting, Counselor Gerard LeBlanc, if we reach out to the organizers of that, see if they could possibly put on something like that. But I don't know if there's going to be any liabilities to the municipalities and stuff. And I don't know if these events that you were talking about was hosted by a different group or if it was actually just someone personally who decided that they're going to get out and play. I don't know how that works out. So I'm going to open the floor to the C.A.O., see if there's any concerns that you may have or any direction that you would possibly suggest.
Yeah, so there's a couple of ways to look at it. Absolutely, you know, Jennifer and her team at the lighthouse could investigate to see, you know, what might it look like if we had open-mic time, you know? So we made, you know, made the deck at the Wenzel House available, and it was, you know, a free open-air concert, you know? What's the issue? What are the responsibilities of the municipality with respect to enforcing social distancing? I would suspect it wouldn't be much different than it is right now. We're, you know, we're open to the public now, and people are expected to abide by the rules, you know, as they visit the lighthouse and the Lee Ferguson Trail, for sure. And then the other way we might be able to approach it is, you know, to go out to our music community. You know, the coal shed organizers are Mile East, and, you know, just say, do you have an interest in outdoor opportunities? And if you do, you know, let's have a conversation about the lighthouse. There's a couple of ways to approach it. What I'll do is I'll just go back to Jennifer, and I'll have a quick conversation with her and kind of see where we go.
Is that what you're looking for, Counselor Gerard LeBlanc? That I'd like to see something going on.
Yeah, anything, anything that's going to bring, that's going to entertain the public, you know, if they go to the lighthouse. In saying that, like, our summer is short, and to play outside, when you get, when your fingers get cold, you can't play the guitar. So, you know, it's, and some people, it doesn't have to be too cold, you know, like five degrees or something like that. It's cold.
When you start talking about indoor spaces, it gets a lot more complicated, and I have many, many more concerns.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's got to be, it's got to be outside.
So I guess my?
I'm not making any promises that we'll be able to pull anything off, but I absolutely will check into it, and I'll just probably keep you updated by way of email.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. I just wanted to come up with that because I know some of the musicians are suffering right now.
All right, seeing that this is the end of the agenda, an adjournment, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Moved by Counselor Daniel Allen, seconded by Counselor Trevor Cunningham. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thank you very much, counsel.